I call this meeting to order on April 21st at 5:03 PM. Can I get a roll call?
Student trustee Shanique Thomas is absent today. Student, I mean trustee Calhoun. Trustee Dopplemore. Dr. Little.
Present.
Trustee Lopez.
Present.
President Ramos has an excused absence today. Dr. Curry?
Here.
Alright, moving on to item 2.01, approval of closed session agenda items. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Oh, second.
Alright, do we have any discussion?
No discussion for me.
Alright, see no discussion. Can you place your online vote, please? Correct.
Well, what is that noise?
That's a unanimous yes vote. Alright, item 3.01, request to address the Board of Trustees on closed session agenda matters. Do we have any requests to address the Board of Trustees on closed session agenda matters?
There are no requests.
Seeing no requests, we are moving on to item 3.02. Do we have, trustees, do we have any requests for future agenda items?
None for me at this time.
Uh, none for me at this time, maybe later on in the agenda, I might have something, but right now, no.
Alright, it is 5:05 and we will adjourn to closed session. Alright, I call this meeting to order at 6:03 PM. Sylvia, if you could do the roll call, please?
Student trustee Thomas is absent today. Trustee Calhoun?
Present.
Trustee Dopplemore?
Present.
Dr. Little?
Present.
Trustee Lopez?
Present.
President Ramos has an excused absence today. Dr. Curry?
Here.
Alright, if you... Uh, trustee Calhoun, if you can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
We sorry, we sorry. Uh, uh, like in school, place your right hand over your heart and ready begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, one day.
Where do the hands land? Sure, you need to quit.
Item 6, report of actions taken in closed session pursuant to government code section 54957.1. Um, there is nothing to report. Moving on to item 7. Actually, hold on. Thank you. Yeah, item 7, if I can get, um, the approval for open session agenda?
So moved.
Second. Dr. Curry, do we have any corrections or additions to the agenda? Alright, it's been moved by Dr. Little and seconded by trustee Calhoun. Do we have any discussion?
No discussion for me.
No discussion.
No discussion.
See no discussion, if you can place your online votes?
You need to do a verbal. That's a unanimous yes vote.
Alright, moving on to item number 8, request to address the Board of Trustees on agenda and non-agenda matters. And the public participation is the opportunity for members of the public to address the Board of Trustees on agenda and non-agenda matters. Reminder that speakers have three-minute time limit. There will be a clock and your name will be called by Sylvia, um, for you to come up to the podium.
First person is Mika Black to talk about the Emily B. Hart Holyfield Library.
Yes. Just let me make sure that the clock is... Oh, there you go.
Hey, good evening. My name is Mika Black. Um, firstly, I would like to, um, just acknowledge the passing of Pope Francis. Uh, may we respect and honor his humanitarian work and message of peace. Um, also, uh, trustee Thomas is not here, but I just wanted to say thank, or thank her for her service. I think it's kind of coming up to the date. Um, but just wanted to thank her for her time. Um, my reason for being here today is to speak on the Emily B. Hart Holyfield Library. Um, we are currently in the collaborative stage of working on signage placement outside of the building. Um, also working with Dr. Curry and providing of the board with options for what that signage will look like. I want to remind the public and the record that this stage, an opportunity is for all of us. So it's not a matter of what I personally want or what the board wants. We want to invite all stakeholders to have a say in what the signage is going to look like and make sure that it is applicable for everyone so that we can continue our fundraising efforts that will benefit both the signage and the students for the scholarship program for next year. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Richard Earl? Give me a second while we restart the clock.
Good evening to the board. My name is Richard Earl. I'm a, I'm a neighbor of the college here and I live just on the corner over here, not across the street. My, my home actually on the other side of the wall from the college. I like to lodge this as not a complaint, but just a good neighbor type thing. And that's with the noise coming out from the Norse, North parking lot. When you guys have let concerts go on there, they're very loud and they go from 2 o'clock to 10 o'clock at night. I can't sit out in my backyard on the weekends with all of this noise. I'm, I mean, it's like, I like, I like music, but I don't, but I, I get tired of it after a while. And I, what I want to know is if we can, if you guys can just move the, move it to somewhere else so that it's not so loud, cause it comes right down the pike, right over the fence to my yard, into my backyard. And when I'm having company, when I'm having company, we can't hear anything. So I'm trying to, trying to get, get things right, okay? And I appreciate if we can do something about it. Thank you.
David Austin?
Alright, how you guys doing today? I want to thank Dr. Curry and the board for having me hear me today. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of the possibility of what's been possibly proposed of canceling programs such as cross-country men's and women's, as well as bad men for women. I think that, uh, we understand, I know, I understand the demographics and culture of my, uh, community. And I understand how these programs are bigger than just finances. They're bigger, they save lives. I've seen it firsthand. I've seen how I've had young ladies who's had children and come and ran and participated in the program as the head track and field and cross-country program and make their way and fight their way through postpartum, fight their way through the homelessness, fight their way through, um, understanding that they are fighting through domestic violence that they're dealing with. And I get it. I get it that there is a, there is a financial need that needs to back these programs. However, I think on the bigger end and on the back end, on the run, on the longer end, that those individuals that feel indebted because Compton College, Compton Track and Field, Compton Cross Country, Compton Batman saved their lives will be more indebted. So when they've reached their success, they'll be willing to come back and pay, pay for it and pay back into our programs. Um, but more so than anything, I think as far as for me, just the transparency and being a part of the process to make sure that all answers are, all questions are answered correctly, all things are clear. And I have transparency as well as the head track and field and cross-country program. So my kids sometimes can't advocate for themselves, but as the head coach, it falls on my shoulders to advocate for them. And so I said before you that if, if and when, should it ever come before you, that you take this into consideration and you understand that there is a big need for these programs, that there is a dire need for these programs in our program, in our community, as well as, uh, within our conference. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Jayron Porter?
Good afternoon.
I don't have the clock to start.
I'm sorry.
I want to make sure you have your time, your full time.
Uh, good and, good evening to the board and thank you for having me here. I just wanted to speak on the cancellation of programs such as men and women cross-country and women's bad men. As a product of Compton College Athletics, I feel like cancellation of these programs in the long run would be very detrimental for our school and, for our school and athletics. I'm sorry, for our school and athletics as a whole. Um, as a product, as somebody who was actually put on the jersey, who was actually going out there and ran and going through the trials and tribulations of being a student athlete here, I know exactly how much these programs mean to not only the people who compete, but the people who actually come to watch us compete. A lot of people are proud of the things that we are able to do out there on the track and at, at the cross-country field. And like I said, I feel like it would really be a detriment if you cancel these programs because life lessons are learned through those lines. Um, honestly, I wouldn't be in college if I didn't play sports. As somebody with a 3.2 GPA, I've graduated here with more than one degree. Um, I have four degrees. And going on to the next level to actually compete at a higher level, I feel like these programs are critical to our demographic as a school and as an institution. And then thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kyle Patterson?
Present? Okay. Hey, good evening, board members. Dr. Curry, um, uh, glad to be here today. My name is Kyle Patterson and I'm a representative for the Western States Regional Council of Carpenters. I'm also a union carpenter that's been doing this work now for almost 25 years. And, uh, we're here today, uh, me and my brothers and sisters here to, um, talk to everyone about the importance of construction industry tax fraud and how it impacts local city governments, um, our first responders, and also, um, our college boards, school boards, and water board districts. So every year, uh, the UBC and the Western States Carpenters, uh, nationally, we participate in, uh, national, um, uh, action, uh, speaking out against tax fraud and how, and, uh, educating the public and bringing awareness of how this seriously impacts our community. And when, when you think about that, uh, there's an underground economy of tax fraud, uh, cheating contractors, right? And, uh, what that means is when contractors are paying cash, uh, under the table, off the book stuff, uh, that impacts communities. Um, you know, uh, bond, tax bond dollars and stuff like that, um, services for teachers and things like that. Uh, when, when there's misclassification on the job sites, all of these things are the recipe for, um, tax fraud and how local, uh, schools and community colleges like this lose out on dollars. And so, um, with that right there, we just wanted to make sure that we, we showed up today. This is an educational thing that we're doing. Um, you all have been good partners and just the work that you're doing with all of the construction taking place. It's stuff like this with labor standards in place, that really, uh, shores up opportunities for the community and contractors that are doing the right thing and paying their bills. Every year, um, nationally, uh, there's three, over $3 billion are lost out because of tax fraud in the construction industry. So with us, the fu, the future belongs to those who build it and it will be built without tax fraud. Thank you.
Thank you. Cory Crockerham?
Thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Cory Crockerham. I'm a member of the Western States Regional Council of Carpenters, Local 323. I'm not going to be long-winded. Uh, just kind of want to echo the sentiments and statements that Kyle made. Um, and, and just thinking about tax fraud, um, when Kyle is talking about the, um, you know, institutions that don't receive those tax dollars, it's not only those institutions that are harmed by, uh, these cheating contractors, but it's also just regular, uh, citizens, regular taxpayer citizens. Cause when those contractors are cheating, um, those workers, they don't have access to health coverage, right? And, um, if those workers don't have access to health coverage, when those workers do get hurt or if they go, they get sick and they need to go to the hospital, who do you think is, is fitting the bill for those workers? It's all of us taxpayers. So I just wanted to bring that to the forefront and like Kyle said, uh, every April, every year, we're going to continue to do this and to continue to educate the community and our partners, uh, in and around tax fraud. And we thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Perez?
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. Sure. Good evening. Thank you for having me here. My name is Joe Perez, Kobe Joe. I'm also a, uh, representative for the Western States Regional Council of Carpenters. And I have some stats right here that I'd like to read to you. Um, nationwide, the gap between US taxpayers paid to the federal government and what they should pay is over 450 billion a year. Our country is being starved of resources that can help build schools and reduce class sizes, improve infrastructure, increase funding and for first responders and help veterans without adding anything more to the deficit. The construction industry is a major contributor to these losses, which amount to a con, conservative estimate of 8.4 billion in unemployment insurance contributions and state and federal taxes every year. Less conservative estimates put the losses at 17.3 billion. Construction is an anonymous, minius leader in the illegal practices of paying workers off the books and intentionally misclassifying employees as independent contractors. Of the two off-the-books payments dominated by more than two to one, so the willful, willfulness of the misconduct is unmistakable. Research, uh, found a staggering 1.3 to 2 million construction workers paid off the books and misclassified those crooked contractors illegally offload 3.48 billion of the federal employment tax obligations onto the backs of workers and their families. Workers' compensation insurers are re, ripped off to the tune of 2 billion. More many, moreover, many contractors use crooked subcontractors and labor brokers to evade their legal responsibilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Crawford? Ryan?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Ryan Crawford. Um, and I'm a student here at Compton College with a 3.7 GPA. I came to this campus not only in pursuant of a degree, but also carrying the invisible weight of postpartum depression. When I first enrolled, I didn't just need an education. I needed purpose, healing, and a place where I can rebuild myself. Cross-country became the place, cross-country became that place. And for many students like me, programs like cross-country and bad men are not just sports, they're survival tools. They teach discipline, community, confidence, and resilience. The purpose, the proposed cancellation of both men's and women's cross-country and bad men teams aren't just a budget decision, it's a life-altering one. These decisions, these programs offer more than physical activity. They offer emotional support, structure, and motivation to students who are already navigating tremendous challenges inside and outside of school. These teams helped me balance motherhood, mental health, academics, and personal growth. They gave me something to wake up for, something that reminded me that I am capable of more. Eliminating the, eliminating these things takes away more than just athletics, but it takes away hope, stability, and connection. If it was not for cross-country, I would not, I, I wouldn't be on campus. All of my classes are online and I have, cross-country is literally my social life here. I urge you to reconsider investing in these programs and investing in the whole student body, I, the whole student athletics department and our well-being and our future and in our pride and spirit of Compton College. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 8.02, Compton College District Board of Trustees, future agenda items requests. Trustees, do we have any requests for future agenda items? I'll start at the end of the table, moving forward.
Trying to word this directly. With what was just read about the, uh, tax fraud? Is it any way we could get, uh, Dr. Curry, you could give us some, uh, paperwork? Or it could go on our agenda as something future so that we could get more informa, I know that the carpenters are here, but is there some type of paperwork that we can have so that as a board, we can become more knowledgeable about the tax fraud? And as they did say, uh, working on this campus, uh, we are doing the right thing, but it would behoove us to still have a lot of that information, uh, given to us so that we could have it for ourselves. And then when these contractors come up, as you guys do the contracts and you'll understand, uh, what's being said about tax fraud and losing money. That's the best way I could put it.
No future agenda items?
Um, just to follow up for when that, uh, agenda item that trustee Calhoun just raised, um, again, a reiteration of our local hire initiatives and percentages of our community members who, um, are part of all of the great construction work that we've been doing over the past years. Um, so that that can be transparent, not only to us, but to the community. Um, and then in response to another request, just, uh, reiteration of our practices around our community events. I know that as a board member, we've advocated, which is very important for community to have access to this campus and to be on this campus, which we've seen increase, which I think is, is a value add. But to also look at the balance with our neighbors and, um, seeing in terms of our decision-making as to where certain events are so that we can, uh, remain the good neighbors that we are and, and want to continue to be.
Moving on to item number nine, Board of Trustees, meeting minutes. Um, can I have a motion for the minutes of the March 17th, 2025 Board of Trustees meeting?
So moved.
Yeah.
Little did. Alright, it's been moved by Dr. Little, seconded by trustee Calhoun. Do we have any discussion?
No discussion, by the way.
See no discussion, if you can place your online votes?
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Alright, moving on to item number 10, reports from representatives and employee organization. We will start off with 10.01, Associated Student Government Report, Serenity Reed?
Hello, everyone. Hi. My name is Serenity. Um, I'm the ASG president here at Compton. Um, so this has been very busy. We all just came back from spring break. Um, so one thing that we have been trying to do is work on this carnival. We have been trying to figure out a way to have like different type of games and, um, food for the students. Cause we kind of wanted to end it, end off this year with like a big bang. So that's one thing that we've just been working on. The carnival, we do have a day is for May 7th. So if you're a student, if you're a faculty worker, you're more than welcome to come. Um, we're going to have, um, free food for the students. But if you are a faculty member, you do have to pay for the food. Um, we're going to have Canes be a, um, they're going to be a, not a sponsor, but they're going to be out there. Canes is like a, um, chicken place that everyone loves. Um, they're going to be out there giving out free lemonade cards and stuff like that. We are still trying to work on a sponsorship with them, but as of right now, a lot of the, um, because Canes, they work with a lot of people outside of, um, Compton College. Um, we don't want to just overuse them, so we don't want to have them, because well, we have came to realize that all of Compton College uses them. So instead of making them like a sponsorship, it would just be more so better if like we just come together and one event, this, this, um, department may use them for event, another department may use them for another event. So more so of that. Um, so last month in March, um, some of the, um, board members of ASG, they were able to go to Washington DC to talk to some congress, um, some congresspeople about the different, um, things that we wanted to bring to the community colleges, um, especially Compton College. One of them was like housing, which we're working on, um, for the students. Um, another thing where we wanted to do was kind of reach out to more so of the younger students that are on campus to bring them back to Compton College. Cause one thing I do feel like we lose sight on sometimes is actually getting the young students to actually come to school and to stay. So we pitched different plans to have outreach programs for students to actually want to come to college and actually stay at Compton College. Um, we also had a woman's day, woman's day tea, which was really fun. And we had to, we was able to hear like people sing. I don't know if she wants to talk about her beautiful voice. But, um, we had a, um, we had a, we had, it was fun. It was a nice brunch. And what ASG is doing this year, we're making the activities more better. And we hope to continue to have bigger and better activities starting, um, um, next year. So with the budget that we do get next year, we want to make sure that we plan a certain amount of money per event, depending on the event. Um, so that's another thing that we've been working on. Um, what else? Yeah. Next thing that we have been working on, guys, is Spirit Week. So Spirit Week is coming up. It will be the same week of the carnival, so it starts May 5th. So we'll be having different activities throughout the week, like So we'll be having different activities throughout the week, like Pyjama Day, Twin Day. And then the carnival will be that Wednesday. And, sorry, whoever's a winner, they will be able to go to the ASG office and get a gift card. So the faculty, you guys cannot participate, it's just for the students. And another, another thing that we have been working on too is basically, we're starting to realize that a lot of the students are coming to ASG towards the end of the year, wanting certain things for like their graduation and stuff like that. So we've been trying to put money aside for students who are now gonna come, come to ASG at the end of the year wanting things, like I know the nursing department, we wanted a nice celebration. So they've been asking me like, well, Serenity, what can you get us? What can you get us? And so I know the nursing department, they wanted to do stuff for the professors, like give them flowers and stuff like that, because, only because nursing school is hard, but I went to another nursing depart, nursing school, I'm not gonna say the name. But when I came to Compton College to see like a whole bunch of black women who are like been nurses for 30 and 40 years, actually want to reach out and help students, I feel like at the end of the year, we should give them something back, because Compton College has like one of the most diverse nursing programs I've ever seen. The other program that I was in, I was the only black girl in the whole entire, in the whole entire my cohort. And in the other, in the whole entire program with about 300 students, there was only five black girls. And so a lot of times when you go to these different colleges, you don't see a lot of black students, but when you, black student nurses, but when you come here, you're actually able to see black, Mexican, Filipino. We're all in the same classroom. So I feel like that's a reason why the nursing students was asking for more money, so we can actually show appreciation to the faculty who like asked, who helped us get this so far. And I do think I'm gonna pass my NCLEX, so I'm not just trying to brag and be like, oh, just give them stuff because I'm here, but the nursing program, it's a very amazing nursing program. And I know we do complain, because where the nursing program is hard, but we still want to give our appreciation back. Final remarks, I've, ever since I've been, been a part of ASG, this is my third year, I've been trying to talk to the, the beauty school department, because right now, they don't have a, what do you call it? They don't have a orientation when they start their, before they start their pro, before they start their program. So a lot of them, once they join, they just come to class one day, they have a professor and they tell them, hey, you have to spend $5,000 on this bag. And the bag contains their pressing comb, things like that. But the first day of class, if they don't have that money, they have to step out. So they don't have an orientation prior to the beauty, prior for them starting the program, because for some reason, there's not a professor or anyone can set those dates, like an orientation to let those students know, hey, this is what you need prior to joining the program. But other than that, we're just, ASG is just trying to end the year with just a nice event, which is a carnival, and just positive vibes, and that's it. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Moving on to item 10.02, Academic Senate Report from Sean Moore.
Do I wait till the time starts? So this is okay now? Okay. No time for me. I'm done. I hope everyone had a good holiday weekend. It's good to see all of you. So I have a few items to just share. We have, we still have a 100% fill rate with all of our campus committees. The ASC is gonna be visiting our senate body on May 1. We are having academic senate president nominations at our next meeting on May 1. And we are having our academic senate bylaw revision team. We've met on Friday, April 4, so we'll be having our second meeting on the Friday, which is May 2, the day after our academic senate meeting. I was able to send the summary of academic senate-approved items from our April 3 meeting, and I actually got the approval back from the district today, so that's good. I'm going to be attending the ASC plenary event, and the theme this semester is creative collaboration now leading for student success. The academic senate has approved the syllabi checklist, so I was able to send it to Dr. Camu for, to upgrade or update our template in the simple syllabi. It has mandatory and optional options. The academic senate, we had a dual enrollment presentation at our last meeting, and we're gonna be bringing forward a formal recommendation to have dual enrollment. We're gonna recommend that it's provided at our fall flex day. And that's really about all, so thank you for your time, and I hope you have a great week. Okay, bye-bye now.
Moving on to item 10.03, CCCFE Certified Employees Report, Dr. David Chavez Mendez. Or another representative. Moving on to item 10.04, CCCFE's Classified Employees Report, Aminqua McKenzie, which I did see today.
Good evening, honorable trustees. It's good to see you. I know it's been a long time. You know, I'm gonna put some of the differences aside, and I just hope that we can communicate. I've been saying that for years now. I've been a local president for over 10 years. I've still been fighting for our classified local. They need your help. We need your help. We need the help of our CEO. We need the help of the campus, just like we support the campus. We would love to see your support too. I'll keep the politics and all that stuff out of this. This is not for that. Just as well, we recently had elections, where we re-elected a vice president, a grievance officer, and a representative to the board of our local 3046. So I'll be sending you all their names. Their effective dates will be July 1, 2025. This local's been working very, very hard to support its campus. And a lot of people need to understand that classified professionals, as well as all of the employees of the school, are the backbone of this college. But the classified professionals are considered the support mechanism of the school. And right now, we need your support deeply. We know there's a lot going on around us that we can not really talk about here in this forum. Our world is different, but we need you. So, but it's great to see all of you doing well. It really is. I get to communicate with most of you. The ones of you that I have not had the opportunity to communicate with, I would still love to communicate with you. I'm always open to communicate with all kinds of people. I don't care, I don't care your status or anything like that. I just like to communicate with good people like that are all in this room. So, that's all I have for now. I'll keep it positive and have a great evening. Thank you very much. I'm working late, so I gotta get back to work.
Moving on to item number 11 for presentations, we have Compton College Associated Student Government.
Good evening, board. My name is Shontae Mumford, and I'm the vice president of the Associated Student Government. And today, my advisor, Ms. Davorsey, and myself will be doing a presentation on the Associated Student Government. So today, we're gonna be discussing, who is ASG? We will also be discussing, we will also be meeting the student council. We will be talking about ASG goals, ASG events, ASG collaborations, conferences, charter clubs, and upcoming plans. Next slide, please. Who is ASG? All Compton College students are represented by the Associated Student Government, also known as ASG. Their governing group, the Associated Student Council, are elected officers who play an important role in determining how student activity fees will be used to coordinate Compton College activities and represent student views on relative issues. There are 14 roles, four executive board, seven commissioners, and three ambassadors. So our president, you just met, Serenity Reed. Then myself, I'm the vice president, Shontae Mumford. We have our secretary, Anthony Vargas. Cynthia Memes, one of the twins, is our commissioner of classes and curriculum. Brielle Johnson is our commissioner of clubs and organizations. Corinthia Memes is the commissioner of environment. Damisha Fuller is the commissioner of financial aid, and Marquee McCready is an ambassador. So ASG goals, the goals of ASG are to bring student life back to campus, make every student feel included, be the voice for students on our campus, support student needs, and help our campus, help make our campus a better institution. Next slide, please.
Okay, I'm a little shorter than her, so vertically challenged. So this, we've had a lot of events this year, and I think that we've done a really good job in meeting the goals of having activities to bring students back to campus. So every fall and spring, we have a welcome week. So welcome week is an essential week for us at Compton College. The goal of welcome week is to ensure that all students have, are enrolled in classes and that they have the support services that they need to be successful at Compton College. We also celebrated Latinx Heritage Month. We had mariachis and folcloricos. We also had a flag patchmaking workshop where students could make a patch, a flag of their country, or as some other people did, so you can see the Young Men Humanist Flag of Brazil right there. We also had Constitution Day, and we celebrated the power of the vote. We had voter registrations rally, rally for the campus. Next slide, please. In the fall, we also did our breast cancer awareness sit-down. That's a very important month for us, for the pink month, as people can say. It's not just for women, it is for men as well. Breast cancer is on the rise for men. So we welcome the opportunity to sit down and discuss breast cancer awareness, actually giving testimonies from survivors who have survived breast cancer. We also partnered with the LGBTQ+ workgroup on LGBTQ+ History Month. We had a get out the vote, and we had a guest speaker. We also celebrated Indigenous Peoples' Month. We had a powwow parade on campus. And we have, we had an eagle dancer. You can see him in there in one of the slides. And then one of our recurring events that we have is our Halloween trunk-or-treat, where we offer a safe place for students to bring their children and any campus employee to bring their child, grandchild, to trick-or-treat safely on our campus. Next slide, please. So in the spring, it was just as busy, and it still is, because you know, we're still, we're still in it. We had welcome week, and then we had, celebrated Black History Month. And I was very proud, ASG put on images of black history, and they, they came dressed as their characters and introduced. We had Charity Adams, we had Harriet Tubman, we had Rosa Parks, and we had Maya Angelou, and we also had Ruby Bridges. And in the, in doing, when they came dressed, they introduced other of their compatriots that fight the good fight for, for people of color. We also had a get in your bag. You can see some of the students up there. They had a chance to create their own unique Afrocentric-type bag, and they got a chance to silk-screen it and keep the bag. And we also had a taste of black culture. You know, y'all know we had some fried chicken and greens and some, some cornbread. For Cesar Chavez Month, we went to the MOLA, the Museum of Latin American Art. It was a very exciting trip. I really enjoyed it. We've also, during the spring and the fall, we had a transfer Thursday. We do collaborations with the transfer department on a regular basis. The first two, the first Thursday of every month, we support them by helping them provide a little bit of food to encourage students to come by to find out about transferring to other colleges and universities. The highlight probably of this month, I, and I apologize to the board if you didn't get an invitation, but it was the Women's History Month High Tea, and it was a great celebration of women, their talents. We had a waitlist, and a waitlist for the waitlist, and finally had to just say, we are at capacity. That's how much everyone enjoyed it. And yes, we'll be asking VP Jones to come back and sing again for us, so you can see the, how the table might have been set up at the, the tea. Next slide, please. So we talked about some of the events that are coming up. Again, we still have one last transfer Thursday, which is on May 1. We'll be collaborating with the transfer center once again. We have Spirit Week. Spirit Week, it consists of several days of different things that are gonna be happening. Maroon Madness, and I say it is for the faculty and staff and administration. If you want to dress up in all your Compton gear, put it on. Come on. Twins Day, you know what, Dr. Curry, you and I could probably try and see if we could dress alike. I don't know. But, Twins, Twins Day, so Twins Day, you pick someone, one of your colleagues, one of your friends, one of your students, and you dress alike. Again, the Spring Carnival and Pyjama Day, and we do tentatively have the ASG talent show scheduled. Coming up also is graduation cap decorating, which is sponsored by the ASG. And for Mental Health and Awareness Month, we're gonna be doing pots of courage. A lot of times you hear people doing vision boards, and, and a lot of times they do a vision board and they just leave it, and they don't come back to it. But with Pots of Courage, you're gonna be decorate, students will have an opportunity to decorate a pot with their vision board, and then they'll be able to watch that pot grow. And so they're gonna be constantly be seeing that pot and coming back to it and looking at that vision. And so that's one of the things, also Pots of Courage, it has been proven that getting your hands into the dirt and so forth is very stress-relieving. And so we're, we want to do everything that we can. We know that mental health is a, is a serious issue for all community college students. One of the things that we actually advocated for in Washington DC. And then we have Asian Pacific Islander Month coming up. We're gonna do some origami and have a taste of Asian food. Next slide, please.
So ASG collaborations, Ms. Davor just spoke on how we collaborate with the transfer center for Transfer Thursdays. We have the LGBTQ+ workshop for LGBTQ+ History Month. Financial aid, we had a Veterans Day celebration. For Mecha and Ethnic Studies, they had the Dia de los Muertos, and they're also gonna have a Selena event coming up. What day is that? The 20?
It's coming up.
We also have been working with the pantry. We've been doing a fundraiser so that we can help assist them with getting more snacks in the pantry for students. The nursing department, we helped them get pending ceremony lanterns. The drill and step team, we assisted them with getting performance gear. And the Black and Males of Color, we helped with Black History Month and Black Grant. And we're actually in the works of seeing what we can do for them for Black Grant Celebration.
Okay, so we went to some conferences. Man, I'm trying to tell you, this is a, we've been, I, with that song, "I've Been Everywhere, Man," we've been everywhere. So we went to CISA, which is the California Community College of Student Affairs Association. That was actually held at the Biltmore, so we were in town for that one. We, while some of us were in Ghana, others went to Nandi. And they are excited about, today, they were just in my office talking about how they can't wait to go back to the conference next year. We also went to the SSCCC, which is the state students, the student state, the student senate for California Community Colleges, I can say that three times fast. And then we also went to the ASAC Conference, which was in Washington DC, which is the American Student Association of Community Colleges. That's the National Advocacy Conference, and we were, you'll see us in that bottom picture. We were advocating at Senator Diaz's office. And it was a very, I want to, I want to put this out there, because it was a very moving experience. It was, I mean, she was crying, we were crying, and one of the students was so moved, because the student said, I never expected to see someone who looked like me sitting here. And it just changed his life, because he saw someone who looked like him. And so it was, it was a, it was a great experience for all. And I wanted to, I want to say this to you all, everybody always wants to be with Compton. Everywhere we go, Dr. Curry, everybody always wants to be with Compton. They want to sit with our students, they want to, they want to pick my brain, they want to know what we know. They want our, they want our gear. Everybody wants our gear. But they, and I attributed that to the things that are going on at Compton College. And I say that because I never go anyplace and they don't ask me, how are you guys doing this? How are you, you know, what, what else are you doing? I'll tell them about the fact that we now have all of our Scantrons and everything free. And everyone said, that's a good idea. I'm gonna take that back. But it's just, it's little things. I don't want to make it sound like it's always all the big things, but it's the little things that Compton is doing. So I just want to, just put that out there to let you all know that. that we are constantly in demand when we go out. And then we went to the Women of Color Action Network through our VP Jones. It was an awesome experience, and people made connections. And the theme of that conference was planting seeds, and seeds were definitely planted.
So every year, ASG hosts a retreat, and...
Where were we this year? I don't even remember. We, we were local.
We, yeah, we stayed local, we didn't go anywhere far, but we did get a chance to go to an escape room to do some team building and leadership workshops. You see, we broke out of jail right here, we did it in, we made it out. Okay, next slide, please.
She talked about that, working together. One of the things we did was, we had a listening exercise, and listening is key. Listening is key as ASG, the student council works together, and listening is key as we work together and share governance on our campus. And so that was one of the key exercises that we did on that day. And if we hadn't, I don't know if that we would have escaped that day. So we'd still, we'd still be there, that's right. So let's talk about the charter clubs on our campus. This year, we had NerdCon. Well, NerdCon, you guys, it's not a new club, it's Anime, they just changed their name. They want to create community and around gaming and animation. We have the Drill and Step Team, they dance and do step performance. And if you don't know, they are award-winning, and they have represented Compton College well. They have represented you well. They were in the Compton Christmas Parade, where they, they won a trophy for, for the step performance or drill performance. I think they came in second, I want to say, on that one. But they have had, they have numerous trophies, and they, they performed with the Divas, what do they call it, Divas of Compton? I think they came in second on that one. I think they came in first on, at the, the parade, and then they came first, second on the Divas. So they're, they're, they're out there, and they're representing Compton very well. Metta, it's to promote unity and empowerment on social justice issues. LGBTQ+, they want to create a safe space for students to gather, and also, they also work on empowering students on social justice issues. Early Educators is a professional in leadership development for students interested in children and developmental domains. Honors and Transfer Club creates community for our honors students to participate in honors-related activities. It's, it's a good thing to not, to participate in activities that are away from our campus, to show our students what else is out there. STEM, also, the STEM Club provides opportunities to engage in science, technology, engineering, and math in a supportive and a fun environment.
So upcoming, we have the ASG Elections, which will be May 1st and May 2nd. And then we have our ASG Awards Banquet, which is May 15th. We look forward to seeing all of you there this year. It is going to be here at Compton College in the Arts Gallery.
Art Gallery.
Art Gallery. And we will be discussing the new ASG logo.
Yeah, so the tartar is retired, and so we'll be looking for a new logo for ASG as well. Next slide, please. So if you, if you have any questions?
Trustees, starting from the end, coming forward.
Yes. I missed the, the Step Show. Did y'all have a Step Show on the campus?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, so will you, just asking, will you ever have a Step Show on the campus?
That's an, that's an interesting activity to consider.
I was, I was just asking.
We did have a Step, a stepper at the MLK event. We had steppers at, on there, and then the, the...
I can speak to that, I'm the advisor overseeing the Step Club. We're road tripping to Vegas on May 2nd for an event. But we do have events that we did this year, at basketball games, and our goal is to triple the amount of events we have next year, which would be ultimately getting a schedule out so everybody can see when and where they're doing it. So that's coming down the road.
So that's next, that's next year? I'm just asking, that's next?
Next year.
Okay. So on any, my last question. On any of your events, do, do you like, does your, you guys accept donations? Do people help you with donation, like monetary donation? Or do you guys just have so much money in your budget that...
We don't, we don't have that much money in our budget.
So, so, so do you go out for donations? Do you, what do you do if you don't have enough money and you want to do it, and you don't? Where do you go and get your donations from, if you do that? Do you ask people?
So we know that that, that's going to be a real critical part of our, of what we do next year. And so we started this year initially just trying to do initial, an initial fundraiser, which was, we had the bling out Compton College shirts. We still have those for sale, by the way, if anybody wants any. And so we did, we, we have started and understand that looking for other avenues of funding is going to be necessary for us.
What are your shirts?
The, anything under XL and below is forty dollars, and a triple, double X and a triple X, and four X are forty-five.
Okay, those, those are my questions. I want a shirt.
You want a shirt?
Sorry. My, my question is, for the events that you have, do you know approximately what? I have to, okay. Do you know approximate, do you know approximately how many students attend each event?
So in, in general, during this, during the fall, we have approximately about 200 plus, because it's, it, there's usually more students in the fall when we're first starting out and we're doing these events. And then probably, we probably go down to about 150 or so in the, in the spring, so.
About 100, 150?
About 150. But then as, I'm going to say, you're right, as we get closer towards the end, some people have ended some of their classes, because they have the early eight-week class, and they've ended that, and then we might, it's, so it gets a little more staggered at the end of the semester. We see fewer people.
Okay, and then my next question is, on page 10, where you talk about the pantry, where you're looking for fundraisers. Is there being outreach or marketing to bring awareness to the, to the pantry, and maybe seeking additional funding for maybe people to volunteer, things to be donated for the pantry?
I can't really speak, Dr. Harrison probably can, because he oversees the, the student equity, which is in charge of the pantry. But I'll, I'll tell you why the fundraiser came about, maybe that'll give you some clarity to why we did that. One of the things that the, I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Harrison, is that the pantry has a contract with a certain store, which I believe is Grocery Outlet. And a lot of the stuff that we get from Grocery Outlet, it's, I'll put it this way, Grocery Outlet is like the Ross of grocery stores. Does that, so you never know what you're going to get. And a lot of times when they get items from, from there, the students tell me that they're close to expiration, or they expire very shortly after they get them. So, and typically, it's not, I'm not going to just necessarily just go with name brand, but not what they necessarily always want. Okay, I'll put it that way. And so the idea behind the fundraiser was to, to supplement, and we have supplemented, like during that whole, we, we took on the whole week of, of winter break for them, when they were open, and we purchased everything, and to put it in there that they, that was from the fundraiser. Okay, now mind you, we, we did the shirts with the fundraiser, and the funds for that we raised, we bought those additional items.
May I interject, Professor? I, I, as I announced at Flex Day, we were going to, agreement, which I sent to Kroger last week, for them to, for three-year deal, for them to outfit or provide items to our food pantry on a daily basis. They received the MOU last week, Thursday, or last week, Wednesday or Thursday. Our goal is to have on the May Board Agenda, the new partnership with Kroger, which will provide the food for our food pantry moving forward.
So Kroger, so, so we're seeking a new partnership with Kroger?
We're, we're effectively seeking a new partnership with Kroger, where they provide food on a daily basis to support our food pantry. And so the MOU, as I mentioned, was, was finalized last week, and we're just waiting for them to finalize it back on their end, so you have this on the Board Agenda. And I would love for this to be able to start by June 1st. The goal for this is that we need to have more food in our food pantry, and what we have now, quality-wise, is not enough to meet the needs of students. And so the partnership with Kroger will be able to have more food, but also to give count the recommendation from faculty, from the Flex Day, where faculty are able to have food in their offices, like non-perishable items, to be able to give students when they meet on, for office hours or for counselor appointment. And that's available for any counselor or faculty member that would like to participate in that program.
Okay, thank you, that's all the questions I have, thank you.
Thank you guys so much for the report, and just a follow-up to the number of students that you guys impact, not today, but if we can have that population disaggregated, so that we can get a sense of who we are actually serving. So in terms of gender, race, age, even program, would be really helpful so that we can see the needs. Also, wondering if you guys partner with Career Services in any capacity as it relates to jobs and internships and things such as that, or if that's a separate, completely separate area?
It's separate, but I would do work with Nicole Joan, Nicole Smith. There's too many Nikoles on this campus, I'm trying to tell you, I get a little confused. Nicole Smith, and so usually when she has a job, events, I'm participating and, and supporting with ASG information. Students usually are out there promoting ASG. So we, we don't do anything where we actually have, our support is for transfer and for, for them, like, we'll support with, I believe they have an event coming up this week, I want to say on Wednesday, I'm not sure. It's, it's with Strong Workforce, and so they're asking us to table and to be there and to be a presence.
Okay.
We do that kind of thing.
Thank you so much. And I noticed that you all put a lot of great pictures in this presentation, and I'm sure they'll show up at the banquet in some sort of reel. But I'm wondering where you all post this impact? As you were saying, you go out and visit a lot of places, but sometimes locally here in our own city, people don't know what's going on at this campus. And it's very important, I saw some of the flags that were made. It would be great to have maybe a Flag Day with all of these different communities posted, or pictures of them, so that we can see the diversity of our student population and faculty and staff represented, or, you know, the tease when people can't come, just imagery of how our campus is engaged, because you guys are doing so much work. And when we look at your goals, bringing student life back to campus, making every student and every stakeholder actually feel included, it would be good to see this visually in different capacities. And so I know Dr. Curry communicates weekly, I know we have newsletters, but it would be really helpful to see this and to get that disaggregated data. Thank you guys for all the work you're doing, and I'm happy you got out that escape room.
I appreciate your presentation. All right, moving on to item number 12, the 2025-2026 Budget Workshop. Dr. Curry, do you want to introduce?
This is annual presentation and information for the Board of Trustees as relates to the budget development. And I would like to invite Dr. Abdul-Nassir, Vice President of Minister of Services, who will provide the presentation. Dr. Nassir.
Thank you, Dr. Curry, members of the board. I'm afraid I don't, I don't have any pretty pictures that my colleagues from Associated Student Government presented. I present to you the Compton College Goals, and then the state budget, and I will talk about the budget assumptions and some next steps. Next slide. So as part of our goals, as you know, it's important that, you know, we want to see the students complete that program. We want to increase our enrollment, and we want to continue to improve our facilities. So it's part of our goals. We want to continue to develop partnerships with, with other schools and colleges and businesses. A stronger sense of connection among employees, students in the college. We've had two years straight of no audit findings, and I look forward for us to continue to have no, no audit findings, and of course, complete the Compton College strategic planning cycle. I want to pause here for a moment. The budget that you see in front of you from the, from the state is based on the governor's budget in January. If you all recall, when the governor presented his budget, we had not gone through the wildfires. So that will change the picture. Next month, the governor presents his revised, his May revised. And so these numbers will definitely change. But at this point, this is based on what was presented in January, COLA of 2.43%. We've got some funding for technology transformation, and we want to fund for community college facilities. Again, that was what he presented in his January budget presentation. Next slide, please. So talking about the tentative budget assumptions, of course, our budget is based on the 5980 Hold Harmless Funding. We will be withdrawing half a million from the Personal Stairs and the OPEB 714. This is what you approved, actually, at your last meeting. Slide, please. We're going to be, of course, PORZ is going up from 27 to 27.7%. STIRS is staying the same at 19.1. We're going to be funding two positions, Culinary Arts and Fire Technology, and Restricted Fund Position Apprenticeship and Workforce Specialist. Next slide, please. One-time augmentation, $630,000. Of course, the first one is, you know, enrollment is a key that we want to really focus on, so we will be putting some resources in that arena, and then budget augmentation one time. And, and as you know, we do want to do whatever we can to help our students in their basic needs. So we've got budgeted Student Bill Program, and Student Technology, and then Summer Initiative Program. Line of Credit, again, you approved it last time, and so we are going to continue to pay for that, and we're going to contribute $250,000 for the OPEB. Next slide, please. Reserves for the Enterprise Resource Planning. As you know, Banner is a big, major resource here for our student information systems, the Personnel Commission, Guided Pathways, and Strong Workforce Program. Next slide, please. We've got to have some transfers, of course, we have to pay insurance. We've got to support our Child Development Center, Guide, Guided Pathways, Nursing Program, and then the Enterprise Resource Planning System, $1.5 million. Those are budget assumptions. Let me briefly talk about the next steps. And as I said, that the governor's budget in May will be certainly different than what was in January, so we'll have to look at that. We are finalizing our 2025-26 Compton College Goals. We do the tentative budget. And then we're going to address some, some budget concerns. We're going to be looking at some athletic programs and reallocate the funds within athletics. So the funding, we will make sure that is funded back into athletics. We'll be looking at our casual and temporary classified budgets over the next three years and reduce the operating expenses. Again, to remind you all, you all remember this, that the funding for us will be flat from now on. The, the state did, we did, we were under the Hold Harmless, but then now we have this funding floor, and until we reach the enrollment goal, our funding will not increase, the COLA will not affect our funding. So that's the challenge. We got to look into the future, and so we have to start looking at some of the expenses and try to cut back and review those if we can. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Trustees, if you have any questions, starting from the end of the table.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Just a couple of maybe future items related. As we see here, and as you indicated, that these budget assumptions were before the fires, and there are a lot of other climate issues that may or may not impact federal funds. So to be prudent moving forward is going to be vitally important. And the fact that we have been prudent to ensure financial stability, I, I don't want to undermine that point, because I think it's very, very important, especially as we continue to work on growing enrollment. A couple of things, as you talked about, new faculty positions and culinary arts... A couple of things, as you talked about new faculty positions and culinary arts and fire technology, that's consistent with our commitment to workforce development, correct? And leading to jobs. And then the student meal and student technology program, as you indicated around basic needs. Not at this time, but it would be great to get some comparative data, fiscal data from other institutions about such investments because I don't think that this is common. And oftentimes, people don't understand that these are fiscal choices that are being made and like any house budget. When you're allocating to something, something else may or may not be impacted. The Child Development Fund, it would be very important to see as well. And it's not on here, but our St. John's investment in terms of healthcare. When you look cumulatively at the fiscal outlay for childcare, basic needs, a meal a day, technology, that we don't overlook that because those are intentional decisions that not all institutions are making. So thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation.
Want to piggyback on Dr. Little, certainly the meals and the technology we offer the students, the serving the students and their basic needs is a point of pride for Compton. I mean, it's very important what we're doing and not many colleges are doing that. We will certainly provide you the information you're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 13, Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Moved.
It was moved by Dr. Little, seconded by Trustee Adopplemore. Dr. Curry, are there any revisions to the consent agenda?
No, there's not.
All right, trustees, do we have any items to discuss? If you can give me the numbers and then we'll go in order, starting with Adopplemore, if there's any. You want to go with yours, Dr. Little? If you want to give out the numbers.
17.
13.17?
I'm sorry, 13.17, 13.18 and 20, 13.23. And then 13.32.
No call us from, thank you.
And I'll do 13.06. So I'm going to do them in numerical order. For 13.06, I saw the responses that you provided, Trustee Calhoun. In your next newsletter to the campus, if you can provide them the number to sign up for text messages alert? I don't know, you didn't address it in her response, but that would be great just to flag it for everyone.
Got it.
13.7.
Similarly, to that follow up was, I think, Trustee Calhoun asked about that question about weapons on campus. So just to reiterate, that is important to have that number for the apps because those give you immediate alerts to know when and where, what's going on. Thank you.
13.17 for discussion.
Dr. Curry, can you just give us just a quick overview as to how this came about, the partnership? Again, please.
So last fall, through our partnership with St. John's, we were reached out with the KEC Foundation, who provided a million dollars in support of our community health partnership that includes Compton University District, Cadran Health, St. John's Watch Health now, Costa de Miguas Hills and Charles Drew University, regards to health partnership. And included in this money, funding was for 13.17, it's $100,000 to support the activities included in our concept paper. And so this is to transfer 100,000 that we received to Costa University de Miguas Hills and also to Charles Drew. This also includes faculty working on curriculum and curriculum alignment and also different workshops and planning as well.
Similarly, for 13.18, and does this include nursing?
Yeah, it includes all parts of nurse, of health partnerships, including nursing. It also includes health courses and also includes future programs, including CNA as well that we offer.
So both, both of these are related to that and they are all related to our workforce development, correct?
All related to the Compton 2035. It's also connected to our Compton Health Partnership that includes this organization I mentioned. And we meet every three months as we assist work and everything that we're doing is outlined in the concept paper.
Next item in 13.23.
So every three years, we have to do an assessment of our, based off our policy, Board Policy 6520 and also Minister Regulation. Every three years, we're doing a assessment of all, not assessment, but also our fixed assets. So these are fixed assets for the district and that's why we asked them for the board to accept it. And this goes, this is part of our records and we have to do that every three years.
13.32. It's contract for Yosimar Jimenez Reyes.
It was just similarly, those two really were similar, the original one that I said, just about speakers in support of our student population, really. I was just wanting to get clarity.
Yes, and I would say, one of the things that I'm doing an analysis of is regards to speakers who we have on campus and also the rates for speakers and we'll be bringing forth the policy hopefully sometime within the next six months. So it's clear regards to how rates are determined for speakers and for consultants as well. So 13.32 is for a, we have a, since we don't have a culinary arts program at our college, we had to hire a full-time faculty member from another college to help serve on the hiring committee for culinary arts as the content expert.
Okay, thank you for clarification about speakers and for all the other activities and ways in which we can integrate those possibly across campus. Thank you.
Do you have any discussion for consent agenda items?
No, I received all my answers and I have no questions on the answers that I received.
All right, if you could please place your online vote. Yes, the first was Little, the second was Adopplemore. That's a unanimous yes vote. Moving on to action items, starting off with 14.01, 2025 California Community College Trustee Board Elections. Board members, this was an item that was postponed last month to this month. There are four candidates that have been recommended. Rebecca Barrett from Contra Costa, Diana Delphin Polk from Peralta, Jose Alcala from Riverside, Udoak Joe Tuck from Long Beach. So we need a motion to vote on four positions that are open for the board in order for us to send our nominations over to the Community College League of Trustees. So the floor is open for, to have a motion to accept as is or to present a motion with an alternate selection.
So we could do a first and a second and have discussion, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion.
So first item has been moved by Trustee Calhoun and seconded by Trustee Adopplemore. Do we have any discussion?
I do. I will vote on number two, three and four. I will not vote on number one. I still say, just me, that there was an incumbent who has been fantastic on the Triple CT Board. She has been a fighter. When the Triple CT Board tries the ramrod or either try to get us to vote a certain way, the other incumbent, I'm gonna get her name in a minute, I think you probably have it. That incumbent and myself and Jose Alcala are the ones that hold the Triple CT Board to the fire. We hold their feet to the fire and we do not let them get away with doing the things that they want to do that goes against our union values and our union views. They've had more than one item on that agenda, which would have disenfranchised union members. And I don't know how we did it because how many people on that board, 20? How many people on that board between myself and the other young lady and Jose Alcala? We was able to get all of them to change their mind because we stood our ground. And so to me, the lady for number one is brand new and she could be good, but I'm sticking with the ones that have been holding that Triple CT Board feet to the fire and not voting for things that we should not be doing. We don't win every time, but so I like number two, three and four. And I wish I found my paper, but it's the other incumbent, it's another lady. Luna, Lunas, let me find the package.
She's not an incumbent. That's the person that you sent, you mean Inez?
Yes. Yes, Inez. Yes, Inez De Luna. But once again, is how we vote. It's just that I can't vote for the other young lady that's not the incumbent.
Any other board members? Yes, for discussion.
I would like to see.
Can you speak into your mic, please?
I'm sorry. Jeez, I'm sorry. I would like to, for, say as a fourth, I would like to see, I would like to cast my fourth vote. What I would like to see is for Tammy Silver. And that's because more folks that are more locally in proximity that can represent us more as a, as a, as a region. So that would be my fourth. The other three, I'm fine with.
I don't know when you referenced the other three, who are your?
I would like to see from.
Who are your three? Yeah. Who are your four?
Yes, my four would be to include Tammy Silver from Pasadena.
And who are the other three?
I'm sorry, to remove, is that what you're saying?
Any four that you would propose?
If you can give me the four names, not just, in addition to Tammy, there's three other slots. What would those three other slots be?
Two, three and four.
Got it.
Wait, I guess is what you would call it.
Understood. Thank you.
In terms of the existing slate, I don't have a major problem, but if we are putting forth new names, I would concur with Tammy Silver. As I work with her on the Women's Commission for the State of California Community Colleges as well as the statewide Diversity Equity and Inclusion and Accessibility statewide committee that I co-chair. She's very active and involved. She is also an incumbent. She did.
Okay, any other discussion that we want to include? All right, so we have a motion on the floor, so we're going to have to do a vote and if that vote, if that nomination does not pass, then we will open it back up to the floor to have someone nominate four candidates. And if we cannot concur with four candidates, at least submit names that we can concur on. So Sylvia, if you can cast a vote, please. Will we cast our votes?
I can't because it's not up here.
That's what I just said. You have to, we have to close this motion out before we move. Well, it doesn't pass regardless.
Motion fails.
All right, so motion has failed. Now I want to open it up if anyone wants to provide a motion for a set of new candidates to move forward. Trustee Calhoun.
I would do, like to do Inez De Luna, Udoak, Jose Alcala and Polk. First name is Polk.
Diana.
Diana Delphin Polk, Jose Alcala, Udoak, Joe Intuck and Inez De Luna.
Does she have a second? Okay, do we have any discussion? If you can cast your votes, please.
They're the same ones. The only one that's different is Inez and she's this person that I had nominated in last month's. I can get your name. With Rebecca Barrett.
Hold on, I'll tell you right now who we were.
I N E S.
Well, you're removing her. Barrett? Correct. Yes, just you're, we're waiting for the vote from you.
Inez De Luna, Udoak, Jose Alcala and Delphin Polk.
Can everybody revote? Can you revote?
Trustees, if you can recast your vote for this last motion that we just did.
With the four names I have?
With the motion is replacing Inez De Luna over Rebecca Barrett. That's the motion we're currently on.
It's to remove Rebecca. Let me.
All right, so that I can understand Robert's rules, because you lost me. When you asked for the second vote, the second motion, I just want to make sure unless I missed something. On the second motion, I gave four names. I did Inez, Udoak, Jose and Polk. And there was a second. There was no discussion. And then there was a vote. And the vote what?
We're recasting that vote right now.
It's the same vote. We're just recasting that same vote.
Hold on, until I get this together in my head. I made a motion for four names and one of them was not Rebecca, right? I named four people, Inez, four people. There was a second. I named four people, Inez, uh, four people. There was a second. There was no discussion, and then there was a vote, and everybody said yes. No, okay, thank you, that's why I'm trying to go back. So it failed, so now somebody ju-
You're currently voting on yours.
Okay, alright, I'm just following, I'm just trying to keep up with Robert's rules now, okay.
So if everybody has casted their vote, then we could tell you if it's passed or failed right now. I don't know who's missing. Oh, got it, so we're waiting on the results. And we'll clarify if it's passed or failed.
Okay, thank you.
Motion carries.
So it, it passed. Okay, moving on to item number fourteen point zero two for Compton Community College District Resolution Number Four Twenty One Twenty Twenty Five A Resolution to Adopt New Compton College Mascot for Campus Wide Representation. Do I have a motion? And a second? It's been moved by Dr. Little and seconded by trustee Dopplemore. Do we have any discussion, board members?
No discussion for me.
No discussion.
If you can, please cast your online vote. Fourteen point zero two.
We had discussion and no one said anything. The motion carries.
Moving on to item fourteen point zero three, Academic Affairs Recommendation for Board Member Participation in the Child Development Center Program for Self-Evaluation Process. Do?
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Calhoun and seconded by, uh, Dr. Little. Do we have any discussion, board members? Seeing no discussion, if you can cast your online vote.
So, just to be clear on this one, is that the recommendations for the board to appoint? So I think the so moved is that you want to appoint trustee Dopplemore?
The motion.
Oh, you know what, I am.
Gotta nominate someone.
We gotta nominate. I'd like to nominate, uh, Dr. Little.
So, uh, before we go back, so if we're gonna follow Robert's Rules of Order, hold on.
That's fine.
We, we're gonna cast the vote, so we're gonna have to, um.
Take back mine.
Yes, someone's gonna have to remove their motion.
Okay, I, Barbara Calhoun removed the motion that I made.
Send your second. And resend my second.
Got it. Alright, board members, fourteen point zero three Academic Affairs Recommendation for Board Member Participation in the Child Development Center Program Self-Evaluation Process. Do we have a motion to nominate a board trustee member to this board?
I would like to nominate Dr. Little.
And I'll second Dr. Little.
I'll accept, what is the timeframe, please?
April twenty second through December twenty six?
Trustee Dopplemore done in the past, so I don't know the exact number of hours, but to go over the report, which I think could be done in person or via Zoom, so no more than an hour of your time.
Oh, yes, I'll accept.
Alright, um, so we have a first, a second, and a person to nominate. Can we cast our online votes?
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Alright, moving on to item fourteen point zero four Academic Affairs Memorandum of Understanding Between Compton Community College District, Compton College, and St. John's Community Health.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Calhoun and seconded by Dr. Little. Do we have any discussion?
No discussion.
Seeing no discussion, if you can cast your online vote.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Fourteen point zero five Instructional Service Agreement, Compton Unified School District, moved by trustee Calhoun, seconded by trustee Dopplemore. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if you can cast your online vote. Dopplemore?
I don't see it.
Did you do a verbal?
Sure. Yes.
Yay.
That's a unanimous yes.
Wait, 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 wait. Want me to do it now?
I closed it already.
That's a, that's a unanimous yes vote.
Fourteen point zero six Instructional Service Agreement, Long Beach Unified School District. I haven't even finished the title.
Because they're all the same. Practically, they're all the same, right?
Give me a second. Um, which of these can I group? Great, I just wanted to double check this. Uh, so I'm gonna finish the title, Californic, uh, Academy of Mathematics and Sciences. It's been moved by trustee Calhoun, seconded by Dr. Little. Do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if you can cast your online vote.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Fourteen point zero seven Administrative Services for Compton Community College District Resolution Number Zero Four Twenty One Twenty Twenty Five B Reserving a portion of the college's potential employee retention tax credit to support visual and performing arts project. Do I have a motion? It's been moved by Dopplemore, do I have a second? And it's based, like, seconded by trust, uh, Dr. Little. Do we have any discussion?
I have one quick question, Dr. Curry. In terms of this kind of redesignation, is there a timeframe? And is this based upon a budget? You know, readjustment?
Uh, we're just waiting for the federal government to issue the check for the E R T C. Uh, we submitted everything in a timely manner, uh, so we're just waiting for that. Uh, the, the reason why this is being brought forward, because we were looking at inflation tariffs as well to the visual performing arts complex, and ensure that we have funding to complete the project, because the bids came in higher. And so we're just reallocating some of those dollars to support this project, so the project can continue to move forward.
Thank you.
If you can cast your online vote.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Moving on to item fourteen point zero eight Administrative Services, Compton Community College District Resolution Number Zero Four Twenty One Twenty Twenty Five C Budget Transfers Augmentations for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Four, Twenty Twenty Five. Do I have a motion?
So, second.
Who was the first one?
Trustee Calhoun.
Uh, so it's been moved by trustee Calhoun and seconded by Dr. Little. Do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if you can cast your online vote.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Fourteen point zero nine Administrative Services Contracts Over One Hundred and Fourteen Thousand Five Hundred for Illusion Company LLC.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Calhoun and seconded by trustee Dopplemore. Do we have any discussion?
No discussion.
Seeing no discussion, if you can cast your online vote.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Fourteen ten Administrative Services Contracts Over One Thousand Four, One Thousand Fourteen Thousand Five Hundred, Fire Blast Global Incorporated.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Calhoun, who is my second? Okay, and seconded by Dr. Little. Do we have any discussion?
No discussion.
Discussion.
Alright, seeing no discussion, if you can cast your online vote.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Fourteen point eleven Revised Compton Community College District Twenty Fourteen Measures the Bond Fund Budget. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Dr. Little and seconded by trustee Dopplemore. Do we have any discussion?
No discussion.
Seeing no discussion, um, if you can cast your online vote.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Fourteen twelve Compton Community College District Twenty Four Measures C C Bond Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Dopplemore, seconded by Dr. Little. Do we have any discussion?
No discussion.
Seeing no discussion, if you can cast your online vote.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Fourteen point one three Facilities Planning and Development Contracts Over One Hundred and Fourteen Thousand Five Hundred Bid Award Resolution Number Four Zero Four Two One Twenty Twenty Five D for Physical Education Complex Replacement Self-Construction Company Incorporated, P E Complex Rebid C C C Zero Eight Seven Project.
So moved.
It's been moved by trustee Calhoun, oh, Dr. Little, and seconded by, um, trustee Dopplemore. Do we have any discussion?
Quick question, this is a replacement from an original contractor, Dr. Curry?
No, uh, this is, we, if you recall, last spring, we went out to bid for this project, we did some, uh, redesign, we scoped into the project. It still came in a little bit higher than we anticipated, but it's not as bad as it was previously. Uh, so this is just a rebid, uh, we went out, rebid the project, uh, this was the lowest responsible bidder, and we have to send it to the chancellor's office to get the, uh, Department of Finance approval, to be able to move forward with the, uh, with construction. So, uh, this is the second bid, second time we went out to bid for this project, and this firm was selected.
And do we have any guarantees based upon the fluctuating, you know, current economic situation or?
The, yeah, the good thing about this is that this locks them into that price. And so our goal is to make sure we monitor budgets, uh, regards to change orders, but really monitoring the budget move forward. We don't have an extra money. And so we're gonna be really, we're, we're, we're monitoring budgets as always, but even tighter now, uh, regards to, um, the, the, the bid amount.
Thank you.
But this is a good thing for the college.
If you can cast your online vote.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Fourteen fourteen Facilities Planning and Development Contracts Over One Hundred and Fourteen Thousand Five Hundred Compton Community College District Resolution Number Zero Four Twenty One Twenty Twenty Five E for Visual and Performing Arts Complex Replacement Bid Award. Uh, Chain, Chalmers?
Chalmers?
Chalmers.
Chalmers Construction Services Incorporated Visual and Performing Arts Bid C C C Zero Eight Eight Project. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Dr. Little and seconded by, uh, trustee Dopplemore. Do we have any discussion?
No discussion.
Seeing no discussion, if you can cast your online vote.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Fourteen fifteen Facilities Planning and Development, uh, Contracts Over One Hundred and Fourteen Thousand Eight Hundred Amendment Scorpio Enterprises D B A Air Masters Air Conditioning. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Dr. Little and seconded by trustee Dopplemore. Do we have any discussion?
No discussion.
Seeing no discussion, if you can cast your online vote.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Item number fifteen for discussion slash action. Dr. Curry, will you discuss the item and request action if needed?
Uh, there, there's no action for this item today, just to give the board an update of where we're at regards to enrollment. Uh, we're getting closer and closer to reading our target goal of forty one, uh, forty one hundred, uh, forty one, uh, I'm sorry, forty one twenty five full-time equipment students. We're right above the four thousand number right now, and so we're happy about that. This also provides you, uh, as the board requested, the number of in-person, synchronous, remote, hybrid, and asynchronous classes that are being offered. And also give you information about the, uh, marketing and advertising, update of what we're doing for fall, and then also some of our outreach activities as well. This Saturday, uh, we have our open house. We're providing tours and if, and stuff on campus for potential students from eleven to four o'clock P M.
Board members, do you have any items to discuss from this, um, do you have any questions for item number fifteen? Alright, moving on to item number sixteen. Academic Affairs Memorandum of Understanding Between Compton Community College District, Paramount Unified School District, and Tri-City Adult Education Regional Consortium Member. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Dr. Little, seconded by trustee Dopplemore. Do we have any discussion?
No discussion.
Seeing no discussion, if you can cast your online vote.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Item number seventeen Board Policies and Administrative Regulations. Dr. Curry will discuss any of these items, and, uh, followed by any questions trustees may have. Dr. Curry?
Yeah, so these are board policies and administrative regulations we work on for the district. Uh, I give a lot of credit to the faculty, staff, and administrators, uh, who've been working on these policies. So you have a couple uh, policies regards to the representatives of the board meetings, which is just an update of the, our current policy. You also have some student services policies. You have an update on the purchasing policy for the district, and also you work a little bit more on the administrative regulation that relates to that. We also updated, uh, political activities for employees. We have a similar policy for board and trustee members, and so that was updated as well. Uh, then we have some administrative regulations that are associated with those board policies. And so next month, we'll be bringing back the board policies for second reading and approval, and then also administrative regulations will be there as well. We continue to follow our schedule as relates to board policies. I think we do a really good job of reviewing board policies on a regular basis.
Board members, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Alright, moving on to item eighteen Information Items. Dr. Curry, if you would like to highlight any, followed by questions from the trustees.
Okay, just wanted, a couple, one is, uh, item number eighteen point zero eight, which is Oliver W. Connor Estate. Uh, our goal is next month, we'll be bringing forth the, uh, recommended, um, next steps as relates to, uh, as relates to the, um, to the state and how we move forward. Uh, I think at the last board meeting, we talked about creating a separate entity, uh, which we have our little council working on, and so we should have that at the next board meeting to bring forward to the board. Item eighteen point one zero just provides you an update on the budget and where we are in that process. Also too, in the package, I want to make sure it's clear, that we add a new item eighteen point two four, which has federal legislative and policy updates. We used to have one legislative update, now we're separating it out for state and also for federal, and that's how it'll be in this next, uh, as we move forward. And you also have an update from campus police, which is out of eighteen point zero seven. And that includes the information items that we'd like to highlight today.
Trustees, do we have any discussion or questions? Alright, moving on to item nineteen Future Agenda Items. Nineteen point zero one, Compton College District Board of Trustees, do you have any future item requests?
As requested, uh, previously, just some updates on the disaggregation of the impact of of A S G Services, um, also.
Of ASG services, um, also, uh, some of the vocational Programs that were, uh, discussed today, and then, um, I'll leave it there for right now.
I do. Um, Dr. Curry, this is, um, if we could add, when we get a, um, an update and a presentation, um, like with Basic needs regarding the The What is it on Wednesday? The farmer's market, when we have the farmer's market. Um, if that, uh, if it can include Maybe a report, you know how when you go to, um, restaurants or entities, when they have, like, their health, Like, when they have their, um, you know, like, their grading, A, B, C, or D. If, um, if that can kind of, um, include the rating of Maybe like a report card on, like, the different vendors that are serving food. We have, um, you know, we-
Are you asking for the vendor that works with us to do a grade on the vendors?
If it's, if it's part of their, if it's part of their, um, If it's part of their policy, the agency that I can't think of their name right now. It's the agency that-
The health department. Yeah, I know, but you're talking about our partnership that we have with the former organization, CLA.
Yes.
But to, to be able to, for them to do ratings regards to health at those vendors?
Yes, to, you know, to check the, um, the rating The health check for-
When they're on our site.
Yes, that are serving food, right? Because some, because there's, uh, there's, you know, we have, um, the, the The food vendors that are serving hot food. We also have, you know, we have the pastries. And just to see if we can get like a, like a food handling, a rating, whatever it is, like a, like a checkup or report card To ensure that those vendors are, are following those procedures. The food and stuff that they are selling is, you know, is, um, is quality. That's what I'm trying to say. We can talk about, we can talk about it, um, a little bit later, but I would like to add At that, whenever we have the presentation From basic needs, when it's, when it includes something with the The farmer's market, is to kind of have a, have it include The The report card of the vendors that are selling The food.
Yeah, yeah, okay, but I just, I would, I would rephrase it to say, can we look at the contract As relates to the vendor that we have, so they could be able to provide grades for the vendors on site Through the farmer's market. I, I think it's more of a process question versus saying, can you do a grade? I think in their contract, that language need to be added to the contract, and then Yeah, and I, and I don't know, but I think it's a policy perspective, as you're asking, that at the farmer's market, that The vendors who are serving food have a health, public health department grade as they sit up, what they're doing. And I think we have to look at the contract, uh, to be able to do that before we even get to the point about a presentation.
Okay, so, so just to clarify, not for the vendors, um, I think it If, if possible, it would be a good idea for them to, to post their, their grade, Their food handling, their food prep rating. But if not, if it's included in that, in that agency's If it's in their policy, that's great. If not, if we could, you know, possibly add it, just to make sure that They're also, because there was, um, chicken in a cooler, for example. You know, and they also are selling eggs, which is great, but I'm just, I'm just also concerned about You know, like the, like the handling, the temperature, the storage of those perishable items. That's kind of like where I'm Uh, concerned. Thank you.
Great, um, moving on to item number nineteen point-
I'm, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure. You're talking about the grade, like, if you go to the rest- Yeah, just let me make, you're talking about the grade that, and you, when you go inside a restaurant, you see the A, B, C, or D. Okay, so, no, just, I just have a question. Would not Is that correct English? I don't know. Would not that already be, I'm, I'm, okay. So you got the food vendor, somebody checked them out. Would they alre-, I'm just asking, wouldn't they already have a health, uh, depart, I'm just asking, would they already have a health department Certificate that they would be given to, uh, I'm just asking, I don't know. Would there already be a grade that they would have to? Okay, no, it's good that she's asking. And I know that, yeah. Yeah, I know that there is one vendor, I haven't been here for a while, but I gotta come back for my tamale. That, 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 that did have their chicken in a cooler, but they had a lot of ice. You know, because they can't cook the chicken all at one time, so it's in a big cooler Packed with ice, unless maybe someday it wasn't packed, but I've always seen ice, uh, On it, and I couldn't be wrong, so I'm just curious. But that's a good, that's, that's a good thing.
Alright, see no other items, um, please note that the rest of the items are going, going to be coming up In our next, um, board agenda. Moving on to item number twenty for oral reports, Dr. Curry.
I just want to say thank you very much to the board of trustees for tonight's meeting. We had a lot of items that are significant for the district as we move forward. I'm really excited about the physical education complex and also the vision performing arts complex moving forward. Uh, regards to construction, well, week nineteen of the, uh, student housing complex, and everything is on schedule. Uh, we are, and we also continue to monitor the budget as it relates to that, but we're moving forward with that project, and it will be completed by the summer of twenty twenty seven For our students to be able to move into that facility. Uh, also that this Saturday, once again, uh, we have our open house, which is from eleven o'clock to four o'clock. Uh, information was included in my newsletter, but we sent a follow email to the board of trustees regards to that. Just the open house, we're providing tours For individuals on our campus, and people are asked to RSVP, because we're, we're ordering food as well. And that concludes my report.
We will move on to item twenty point zero three as our student trustee is not present. Uh, trustee Calhoun. Trustee Dopplemore.
Yes, um, I would like to just give a shout out and say that Um, the state of California in terms of financial aid, this is like for the early session. California ranked number five, and now that we move into The filing period for community college students, uh, I just, I hope that our students are really taking Advantage and applying for, um, the financial aid and not leaving any money on the table, so Let's, uh, look to the community colleges for us to take that fourth position, um, overall in the nation. That's all I have. Thank you very much, and happy, um, belated Passover and Easter to everyone. Thank you.
Dr. Little?
Thank you to the administration, faculty, staff, students, and everyone for their continued Uh, hard work to ensure that our community gets the educational and professional opportunities that they deserve. That's all.
I want to make sure that our student population, um, is aware of two upcoming scholarships as they're transferring out Of our institution and going on to a different one. CLBC, which is the California Legislative Black Caucus, has their annual scholarship, and their application is open and will end May thirty first. And the California Legislative Latino Caucus also has their scholarships, and theirs closes on June first. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is May nineteenth, twenty twenty five, and we conclude this meeting at eight o'clock today.
Thank you.